Good evening and welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, September 15th. I call this meeting order at 7:00 o'clock. Will everyone please stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Elise, will you please call roll? Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Benish.
Here.
Councilmember Shovlin.
Here.
Councilmember Gra.
Here.
Mayor Hubbard.
Here.
All right, next on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion for adoption.
Motion to adopt.
All right, we got a motion from Councilmember Shovlin.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Benish. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, agenda is adopted. Okay, and that moves us along to visitor presentations. Is anybody here to speak to the council about anything? Oh, no? Okay.
I think somebody in the back row, maybe.
Might be brave enough to come up and introduce themselves? No? I did make our scouts do it last week. I feel like I... You want to come up and just say hi and introduce yourself? I promise we'll be very kind.
Hi, my name's Jonathan. I'm from Chaska Street 174.
Hi, Jonathan. Thank you for being here. Are you working on a badge right now?
Uh, since it's in the community.
Okay, that's wonderful. Well, hopefully, this will be a very fun-filled evening for you. So, you can go ahead and sit down unless you have anything more to say.
For being here.
And thank you for being here. You were very brave, so... All right, anybody else here under visitor presentation, something that's not on the agenda? Otherwise, we can move right along to approval of the previous meeting minutes. These meeting minutes are from September 8th, 2025. Does anybody have any additions or corrections on the minutes?
Motion to adopt the minutes.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Ooh, it's a tie. All right, I'll give it to Councilmember Benish. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, minutes are approved. And then that moves us along to the consent items. These are items that receive little to no discussion, although we can certainly pull something off the consent agenda to have a larger discussion about it, or if anybody has any questions, or I'm sure staff is happy to answer those.
Mayor, I'll just comment that I noticed the resolution for supporting these 111 referendum requests. Just want to go on record again when I say that, because I said it last week. I'm a strong believer that good cities and good schools go together, and supporting our schools are valuable to all involved who live and around in Eastern County, including the city of Chaska. So, I'm very proud that we'll be presenting and approving those consent items with that in there.
That's really great to mention. I think also, it's worth mentioning, for those that didn't watch last council meeting of last Monday, the 8th, the school superintendent did come out and do a presentation in regards to the agenda. So, her presentation is on YouTube, along with the slide deck that she had, so... I also just want to, I want to recognize our commissioners, Ren Lasur and Juigati. They had resigned. I know one was moving, and the other one, she's a student, and she's in college now. So, I just want to thank their time and efforts and energy into being on our Human Rights Commission, so...
And then I was just going to call out the on-sale liquor license for the downtown business alliance, just appreciating the council's continued support for things like that. They're just, this is one way of bringing people downtown, roam about, and move around and attend, or patronize our businesses. So, just wanted to call that out and appreciate the continued support for that.
Yeah, I agree. It will be, it will be good for our downtown businesses, create a lot of buzz and energy with some of the events that are happening now through the end of the year, so... All right, well, with that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
Motion to approve consent.
All right, we got a motion from Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Gra. Any other discussion? All right, otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Consent items approved. All right, now that moves us along to action items. So, first one is 8A, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-56 and Ordinance Number 1071, Approving the Preliminary Site and Building Plan, Zoning Ordinance Amendment, and Easement Vacation for Auto Pros Ryalar LLC PC Number 2025-10.
Mayor, Councilmember, the item in front of me tonight, you've seen before during the concept planning phase, is an addition onto the Auto Pros business, which is located down on Old Audabon Road. This is one where the business is really sort of outgrowing its space, and is looking to expand to be able to take care of the increased customers. And this is coming from the Planning Commission with a recommendation to approve. So, I'll turn it over to Liz.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, members of the council and Mrs. Mayor. We have a preliminary site and building plan, zoning ordinance amendment, and easement vacation for Auto Pros. That's located at the addresses of 1601 and 1603 Old Audabon Road. The site in question is located towards our southeastern portion of the city. This exhibit is meant to show where the site is located, which is highlighted in, or outlined in orange, and highlighted in the two different blue colors. The existing Auto Pros building is highlighted in the lighter blue, and is 1601 and 1603 Old Audabon Road. The other site in question is the site immediately south. That's owned by the city or the EDA, and that's highlighted in the darker blue. Some of the surrounding uses of this parcel include a majority of industrial on the north and west sides abutting this parcel, residential to the southwest, additional industrial to the southeast, and we also have the East Creek Diversion Channel and the Regional Trail just immediately east of the property. So, as Matt mentioned, we're at preliminary step for this project, which it's right in the middle of our three-step process. The first step, which is concept plan, back in 1997, this site got formal approvals for site plan, plating, and rezoning at that time. There was a future building shown as a part of those 1997 approvals, and because of that, with the addition that's proposed of 3,000 square feet, the concept plan portion of this request was not warranted. So, that's why we're starting at preliminary here. So, we'll see preliminary and a final come through on the council side. So, to give a little bit of background and some previous approvals of this site, Auto Pros is the current business out of this building today, and they've been in operation for roughly 45 years. They specialize in auto repair. They currently have nine team members at their current Chaska location with five service bays. They are looking to expand their building to add on the service bay operation of their business, which would ultimately bring in more jobs for the business itself. March of 1997 is when the site and building plans were approved for what is known as Auto Pros today, and also for the site immediately south, which is known as Lot 4, Block 1 of the channel addition. And as I mentioned before, there was a future building planned as a part of that Lot 4 configuration, which totaled 2,700 square feet. The rezoning also took place during those 1997 approvals, which zoned the property to a planned industrial district, PID5, to be exact. At the time that these approvals were completed, the city owned both the parcels, so both the parcel that Auto Pros sits on, as well as the Lot 4, Block 1 immediately south. The city or EDA did ultimately sell off the property that Auto Pros sits on today, and it was the anticipation that they would sell off Lot 4 as well when an end user was identified. Auto Pros is interested in expanding their business, so they did approach the city to purchase Lot 4 to do an expansion to their business. So, in July of this year, you did approve a letter of intent from Auto Pros to purchase Lot 4 with the anticipation to add on to their building. So, the existing conditions of the property, so again, it's made up of two lots, one that's currently owned by Auto Pros, which is known as Lot 3. That's roughly .5 acres in size, and that contains a 3,700 square foot building with five bays and a parking lot that totals 19 parking stalls. The lot immediately south, again, that one's owned by the city or the EDA, and it's a little under a half an acre in size, triangular in shape, and has an overhead power line that bifurcates the property in purple or pink on the screen here. The property is accessed by two access points. There's one that exists on the north property line that's shared with the property to the north, so it is a shared access on that north property line, and then a, an access point immediately south of the building on Old Audabon Road as well. Some significant utilities that exist in addition to that power line that's on-site, there is a 36-inch sewer pipe that runs along the western side of the properties, as well as a drainage and utility easement that goes over the top of that. The DNU easement basically goes to kind of that eastern edge of the 36-inch sewer pipe, so it has been identified as an easement area that does need to be expanded, and we'll get into that a little bit later. There is also a drainage and utility easement that runs along the joint boundary of Lot 3 and Lot 4 that will also come into question tonight. These are just a few photos of the existing property. Top right, or top left image is looking from the shared access on the north property line and the northern half of the Auto Pros building. Top right is looking from Old Audabon Road from the south side of the building. The bottom-left image is looking from Old Audabon Road at more so the Lot 4 configuration, which contains a existing grove of trees, as well as that overhead power line that I noted earlier. And then the bottom-right image is the backside, or the east side of the existing Auto Pros building with their five bays. So, the current request, we have three different components of this request this evening. One is for a preliminary site and building plan, which entails a one-story building addition totaling approximately 3,000 square feet, as well as a parking expansion to their existing parking lot. They're also requesting a zoning ordinance amendment to the zoning district that they're currently in, to PID5, which would entail an amendment to the parking setback for Lot 4. And then the third and final component is an easement vacation of the 10-foot DNU easement on the joint property line of lots 3 and 4. This is the preliminary site and building plan. The building addition, which will be essentially flush with the existing building, will extend south and is outlined in red on the screen. In order to accommodate this building addition, they do have to acquire Lot 4 to move forward with the building addition, so hence why we've had previous approvals in a letter of intent for them to move forward with purchasing that property. Again, this is a 3,000-square-foot addition. It will add four more service bays to their existing building, so that'll bring a total of nine service bays in operation at the site, as well as a new, newly-designed customer lobby that clients or customers would be able to come in on, off the east side there to service their vehicle. There will also be an expansion to the parking lot to add six more stalls, so a 25-stall parking lot. This will exceed the parking code requirement for this type of use by three stalls, so it'll be more than adequate to serve the building and function. In terms of the access points, the northern access point will remain as it is. The southern access point will move south to line up with Arbor Drive to the west there. So, this will help aid in that parking lot expansion, add some additional parking stalls, and a drive lane around the building. And full circulation will be achieved from both access points around the building. Parking setbacks and building setbacks are met, with one exception on the east side. There is a zero-foot setback proposed on the east edge on what is known as Lot 4, and basically, it's kind of pinched between where the building addition is going and where the drive aisle is being achieved around the building, and we'll get into that a little bit more later on. And that is why they're asking for a zoning ordinance amendment to this component. The landscape plan is shown on this screen. I think the, the most important thing with the landscape plan above meeting the city's requirements is ensuring that they're providing adequate screening, mainly on the east side as it abuts the regional trail. They are proposing new plantings on the east edge between the parking lot and the east property line there, as well as on the south side of the property and between the parking lot and the eastern property line. The grove of trees that are situated on the south side of the site will all need to be removed with the improvements proposed here. And with the loss of screening space in between the driving, the drive aisle and the eastern property line in this pinch point area, we've noted the importance of trying to place those plantings either on the south or north sides. So, some conditions of approval, approvals are in place to further bolster their, their screening methods on both sides of the site on that eastern property line. This is the building elevation proposed, so essentially, they'll be matching what's currently out there in terms of material and color and height, so it'll be a seamless incorporation of the building addition. Getting into the zoning ordinance amendment side of things, specifically, it's an amendment to the current zoning district out there, PID5, as it relates to the parking setback for Lot 4, or kind of the southern half of the site where the building addition is proposed. There is an amendment to the east property line setback adjacent to the East Creek Diversion Channel to be zero feet for the area just immediately north of that power line, too, and as proposed in their site plan exhibit. To get into the specifics of that and how the city has analyzed that from a reasonableness standpoint, and the reasonableness of the request, there are a few components that make it reasonable out there, and one of them being Lot 4's configuration. With it being triangular in size, it does start to taper down and lose that buildability as it starts to go south. So, it does limit the shape and size of building addition and how things are laying out on that southern half. The sewer pipe that's on the west side, that obviously can't be moved. The easement area that's needed over that pipe is 40 feet in width. Today, the drainage and utility easement is only 25 feet wide, so we do need 15 feet of additional easement space to capture the maintenance corridor needed for the size of pipe and where it's located. So, effectively, it's creating a 40-foot setback from that west property line. The PID5 district only referenced a 30-foot setback along that line, but with how we know to maintain the sewer pipe, 40 feet of easement area is needed, which effectively creates that western setback on the west property line. So, effectively, that gives, or 10 feet is lost on that west side, so it basically pushes the building 40 feet back. The building addition does meet the building setbacks for the district. However, as you start to move south with the building addition, again, that area to the southeast of the building addition and where the parking lot is placed starts to squeeze or create a pinch point in between the building and that eastern property line. So, the zoning ordinance amendment is really to address that pinch point area between the, the building and the eastern property line for just the, the parking lot setback. So, again, the amendment is to propose a zero-foot parking setback for that pinch point area, really the area that's highlighted and, or outlined in that exhibit here. In, in terms of staff's analysis, we feel that this is a fair trade-off to the extra easement area that's needed on the west side to be able to do the amendment to kind of make up for that loss of buildable area on the west side.
Liz, does that, that doesn't impact the pedestrian bicycle trail, correct?
No, it doesn't. There might be some site work that needs to happen on that property that the trail is located on, and we're currently, or the applicant is currently coordinating with the necessary, or the appropriate agencies to take a look at that, but it wouldn't affect the placement of the trail. There's still quite a, quite a bit of distance between the trail and where that site work would occur.
Okay.
And then the third component of the request is for an easement vacation, and it's specifically for that 10-foot-wide drainage and utility easement that runs along the joint boundary of lots 3 and 4. This is a pretty typical easement on a joint boundary, is you get five feet of easement area on either side. So, they are asking or requesting to vacate that easement. And from staff's analysis, we did research to see if there were any utilities underneath, and there aren't. Whether or not we needed this easement for drainage conveyance, and it was confirmed we do not. And then with the other easements that are being requested with the site plan, so with the additional easement over the sewer pipe, and then also what's needed over the power line, we feel that adequate easement area will be still in place or created with this proposal. So, in sum, staff is accepting of the easement vacation request. Just a few things that will need to work on as they prepare for the final site and building plan of the city. They'll have to continue to coordinate with the Army Corps of Engineers on any site work on the East Creek Diversion Channel property. Wetland plan review completed and approved prior to that final submittal, and then working on the additional screening and plantings needed with the landscape plan along that eastern property line adjacent to the trail and the, the parking area. So, with that, we have two separate motions this evening for you to make. One would be to adopt Resolution Number 2025-56, which is approving the preliminary site and building plan and easement vacation for Auto Pros at 1601 and 1603 Old Audabon Road, and then based on the conditions that are listed within that resolution. And then a second motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1071, which is approving the zoning ordinance amendment to PID5. And that, a copy of that is in your attachments of your packet. Happy to answer any questions. We also have the representatives here with Auto Pros if you have any questions for them.
Does anybody have any questions for, for Liz? You answered a couple of mine during the presentation, so thank you. My, one question with the pinch point, and I'm assuming, I think you've already answered the question, was it looks like it's been evaluated from a public safety standpoint. Fire truck can get through there, it can move ability.
Correct, yep. We haven't had any concerns from the fire department in terms of the turning radius.
Okay. My secondary question was, I know there's overhead power lines. Those are our power lines, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Are we eventually going to bury those power lines?
Yes. It's not anything that's imminent
Okay.
to happen.
Sure.
But eventually, yes.
Okay. That was my other question.
Good job, Liz. You're always very informative in your
Thank you.
You're walking us through it. I appreciate that. And congrats to the Auto Pros guys that you're expanding. That's great, and hopefully means business is going well and new employees to come on. It's exciting.
Do you have anything you would like to say? Want to, you guys want to come on up?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Peter Hilger, Ryalar LLC, 14 Pheasant Lane in North Oaks. Glad to be back in the city of Chaska. It was 1980s and 90s when the last time I did a project, and I didn't have gray hair. So, I really appreciate your consideration of this project. We've done a lot of work, as you can see, just by the documentation that you had to review, everything that we put together here. I think it all works but for one small item. And I want to call your attention to the resolution specifically. It's requiring that the cross-access easement on the north property be memorialized, because it isn't presently. We've been making progress, or trying to make progress with the northern property owner, which is Adina Seasonal Services, and actually Nelson Masonry is also sort of impacted by this same access easement. But in spite of our efforts to have them agree to sign a joint access easement across the properties, he's indicated to us several times that he doesn't see a need to sign it. Everything's fine just the way it is. Well, that creates a problem for us, as you might understand. That basically prevents the development, if that remains as a condition. So, what we are suggesting or offering to consider before we pass the resolution, or hopefully pass the resolution, is that we can work out some language that would allow us to provide a best efforts to continue to try to get that cross-easement issue resolved, which actually should have happened back in the 90s. So, there could, that could happen a number of ways. I think, and I'm not an attorney, but from all the years that it's, it's been in place since the mid-1990s, it's grandfathered in now. And so, I think that there's no real prohibition from anybody continuing to use it for any reason. But the other thing, we'd be happy to do some sort of a covenant on the property or something like that, that would assure that any time in the future that that cross-easement, when perhaps Adina Services needs to sell the building, it will probably come up at that point, that we need to memorialize that cross-access easement. But we're basically in a position that we have made several attempts to work with them to no avail. Personally, I'm not sure he quite understands what, how a cross-access easement benefits him, but we can only go so far. Other than that, we are working steadfastly with the Corps of Engineers, and we have submitted an alternative to the city that should the Corps of Engineers decide that a couple of feet of additional dirt on their property is outlined on our plan is not adequate, or won't be approved, we can still put a retaining wall there. And we'd like not to do that, because we can feather the grade in very nicely into that, sort of that berm, but we'll continue to work on that. I also want you to know, and I think it was part of our narrative, that we've got some I also want you to know, and I think it was part of our narrative, that we've got some incredibly poor soils on that site, as you may well be aware of that whole area. And so we're expecting to, or hoping to start construction in the spring, hoping to do it this fall, but that, you know, that's not going to happen now. So we hope to start construction in the spring, and in the meantime, that'll give us enough time to resolve the Corps of Engineer issues, which that takes just a long time to get approved.
As it does.
Yep, so we'll continue to work on that. And the wetland delineator has already mentioned that there is no wetland on this property, but he needs to get his evaluation approved by the agency of record. So that's where we sit today. We are ready to move forward, but I hope we can have some discussion on that point on the resolution. And I'm here to answer any other questions. Brendan Goman is here as well from Auto Pros, and I'm sure he can talk to you about how to repair your engines.
I would suggest, I mean, we're not going to be able to solve the issue tonight of the, of the access. It's an, I would suggest that we do something similar to what you're recommending here because there's perhaps a prescriptive easement that exists there because it's been used for so long, but we need to do some research to, to really dig into that more. But I think it's sufficient for this meeting to just take that approach, and then we could have that as just a condition that we have to address at the final. Is that okay with you, Nate?
I would have suggested the same thing.
All right.
Does anybody have any questions for Peter at all? I think you've laid out your narrative very well. Thank you for bringing that to our attention as far as the cross-easement. And I wish you the best of luck with Army Corps of Engineers on a timely resolution. Hopefully, it works in your favor.
We know that it's already in their system.
Okay. Yeah. I know the wheels can move a little slow.
Yep.
So wonderful. Thank you. Yeah. All right. Well, we've got a few motions here to make. And so-
That'd be in the resolution.
Yeah, the first one?
Yep.
So it would be the motion to adopt resolution 2025-56, approving the preliminary site and building auto, building plan for Auto Pros. An easement vacation of the 10-foot wide drainage and utility easement along the joint boundary of lot stream four, block one channel addition with the prescriptive, the condition of a prescriptive easement to be addressed at final?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be fine.
I nailed it.
Well, well said.
Well said. I wrote it down. I'd entertain a motion for that.
I'll make the motion for all that.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Hatfield.
I will second.
And we have a second from Councilmember Benish. Any other discuss, any other discussion? All right. Well, with that said, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. And then we also have a motion to adopt ordinance number 1071, approving the zoning ordinance amendment to PID-5.
Motion to approve ordinance 1071.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Chevlin.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Gra. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? My cords are on my thing. That motion was approved as well. I think those are it, correct? All right. All done. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, well, that moves us along to action item 8B, which is a public hearing, consideration of modification of redevelopment plan, District Number Four, establishing TIF District Number 25, adopting a, adopting a TIF plan, and authorizing execution of TIF agreement and granting a business subsidy. Take it away.
All right, Mayor and councilmembers, tonight, this is action that we're taking both here in the council and the EDA to deal with the subsidy, subsidy side of Edco's project. You will see their final plans come back to the council at the September 29th meeting. We were going to have the two at the same time, but we had already published this one, so that's why we're having it tonight. But I'll turn it over to Julie, and she can go through and explain some of the details.
Councilmembers and Matt. As Matt said, this project has been before council several times for Edco's expansion, so, or industrial manufacturing headquarters, so hopefully you're familiar with it. I'm not really going to go through that portion. Back in July, the EDA approved a letter of intent that defined the general terms for Edco's TIF assistance. And then in early August, council called for the public hearing for tonight, which as Matt mentioned, is why we're asking to hold a public hearing tonight, even though we're going to bring the final approvals to the September 29th after the planning approval items go through. Before holding the public hearing, I just want to give a summary on the TIF plan and the TIF agreement. Both documents are attached to, to your reports. The TIF plan is basically the official guiding document that kind of lays out the district, why it's created, how, what, what the funding is and how it's going to work. So we're proposing to establish TIF District 25, as Mayor mentioned in the title. For Chaska to establish a TIF district, the district must be located in established development district. And for the last several decades, I think it was in the 80s, we have placed all of our TIF districts in redevelopment district number four. But because we're creating a new district, we're going to have to modify that to add in the new district. There's a map in the report that shows where the district is. It encompasses one property. It's kind of the southeast of Engler Boulevard and Creek Road, and it's located in the southwest Chaska Business Park area. So the modification will be required to add this new district. It will be an economic development district, which supports developments such as Edco's that are primarily industrial and manufacturing, and then there's some ancillary office that the headquarters will use, and that's also allowed. The duration of the district will be eight years, which the relatively short period is nice because the increment, the tax increment will go back on the tax rolls fairly quickly. As outlined in the initial letter of intent that was approved back in July, this district will be eligible for three times the property taxes due to the future expansion potential for the building. The TIF plan identifies objectives for the district and what, what the project will be established. This includes redeveloping underutilized properties, which the property right now is farmland. It will be developed into industrial. Another objective is that the funds for the district are to be used on eligible improvements related to the qualification of the property as an economic district. So basically, the industrial manufacturing headquarters qualifies as an economic development district. One other objective in the plan is that the expansion, the project will allow for the expansion of the city's tax base and facilitate jobs growth. And this has always been one of our city's goals with establishing these types of TIF districts. The plan does find that there's no reasonable explanation, expectation that the proposed development would occur other than the use of TIF. The development also aligns with the city's goals for the business park in that area. This TIF district will have community benefits, and those include, Edco will relocate 150 jobs to Chaska with their headquarters. They will also add 25 new jobs within 25 years with an average wage of $20 an hour. This would significantly, continually increase Chaska's tax base and increase the jobs and bring jobs to the community. There's also infrastructure investment that will be done with this project. We will be expanding the water and sewer utilities and upgrading Creek Road up to the, the western border of Chaska. The TIF plan estimates that the increment created over the life of this TIF district will be $4.8 million, and that will be captured over the entire life of the district. And then just to touch on the redevelopment agreement, and this is the second document that's attached to the report, this is basically a contract between the city and the developer. And as you might see, if you've read through the agreement, that it's noted that TCWG LLC is who the agreement is with. They are, in essence, going to be the developer for Edco, and Edco is identified as the end user. And this is kind of how some of these types of projects, this is a typical occurrence. It's a way for them to set up their financing structure. The agreement is in line with the letter of intent that was approved by the EDA in July. The proposed amount of TIF financing that will go to the developer is 1.64 million, and that will be pay-as-you-go tax increment. So basically, the developer will complete the project, and then will be paid back annually based on the amount of increment over the life of the district. The remaining funds of that 4.8 million that's expected to be generated in the district will be used for public infrastructure on Creek Road and then administrative costs. This does qualify as a business subsidy, so there are job and wage goals, and that is to bring the 25 new jobs within two years at the $20 per hour. So tonight, we are asking that you hold the public hearing to establish TIF District 25 and granting the business subsidy. And then in September 29th, we will ask council and EDA after this meeting and, after the meeting on the 29th, to adopt the resolutions establishing the TIF district, modifying District Number Four, adopting the TIF plan, and authorizing the execution of the TIF agreements and the business subsidy. The EDA will be asked to do the similar action. I'm happy to ask, answer any questions you have. I do want to mention that John Lewis, the president and CEO of Edco, is also here tonight and can help answer questions as needed.
All right. Well, first, does anybody have any questions for Julie? No. No, you, you did a great job. I think it's really great to explain kind of the monetary values and details of where things are going. I think that helps because I know TIF can be a very ambiguous sort of entity, and I think it's really great to kind of expand and clarify kind of what, what the evaluation is and what it's going towards. So, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for, for Mr. Lewis here? I appreciate, I know it's, you know, planning and going through the process and establishing this, and I know it's a lot of work. I, I just want to also just, again, just recognize, thank you for your efforts and your desire to be in our community. We really appreciate it. You know, this is kind of part of that, you know, tool in our toolkit that we can use towards redevelopment, and, you know, it's a shared goal. I think I can maybe speak for the rest of the council that, you know, bringing jobs to our community to have in our households. You know, right now, we, we talked about this, I think, a meeting or two ago, that Chaska kind of sits right now at like one and a half jobs per household, and the goal is to have, you know, two jobs per household. And so, you know, your investment in our community helps lend to that being a shared goal and desire for our community. You know, we want to see well-paying jobs here, and I appreciate you making that investment. So, thank you for being here. And the infrastructure improvements are obviously a benefit to not just Edco, but our residents as well that, that drive those roads and live nearby, and our other future businesses that invest as well. So, we have to hold a public hearing, and I'm going to open that public hearing at 7:43. Does anybody want to come up and speak towards, towards this action item?
Thing in the back may want to-
You picked the action-packed meeting to come forward, didn't you? Yes. You can go home and look up at the local library what, what tax increment financing is, and it will definitely put you to sleep. If you're, if you're having insomnia.
Lot of badges for that.
Yeah. But with that, no one clamoring to get to the podium here, I'm going to close this public hearing at 7:44 PM. And it looks like, do we have an action item to vote on in this, or it was just holding the public hearing, correct?
The public hearing, because it was published, we had to hold it tonight.
Yeah.
And then the action will be next meeting.
That's, okay. Great. Well, it always feels kind of, huh, when we don't vote, and I get to hammer the gavel down, but thank you for being here, and we got that public hearing checked off the list. Thank you. All right, well, that moves us down the agenda to 8C, which is adopt resolution number 2025-57, approving the concept plan for the municipal service building, Ortel Architects on behalf of the City of Chaska, PC number 2025-12.
Mayor, councilmember, this is sort of an exciting one. It's part of our building program and the first chance that we'll have through the planning process to look at our new municipal service building. And actually, it, it fits well with the Edco site before because Edco's located on the same really bad stretch of Creek Road that the municipal service building will be, so we'll be sharing in the expense of, of upgrading that road to be able to, to handle all the new jobs out there. So, so this is, you know, we've been working now on designing the municipal service building since about March. That's when we brought Ortel in. We've done lots of tours of different facilities and had lots of, lots and lots of meetings to sort of get towards some of the, the key aspects. But I think the concept plan does a good job of really laying out, you know, what the footprint of the building's going to be and what it'll look like. So with that being said, the planning commission did approve the concept plan, or recommended approval of it, and I'll turn it over to Liz, who can go through the presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, councilmembers and Mrs. Mayor. We have a concept plan in front of us for the municipal services building, which is being proposed by Ortel Architects in the City of Chaska. The site in question is outlined in kind of an orange-yellow on this aerial exhibit. It's located just west of Highway 212 and immediately south of Creek Road. Some of the surrounding uses include rural residential immediately west of the property. We have about five properties on Wetzel Lane there, an additional property on Creek Road. And the City of Chaska's border is right there as well, which blends into Dahlgrann Township immediately west of that. Edco, which was just talked about, is directly northwest of this subject site and highlighted or outlined in kind of the lighter blue. And then we have additional kind of office industrial immediately north of the site off of Chaska Creek Boulevard. And then one lone residence immediately northeast of the property. The south side of the site is flanked by the ravine system and West Chaska Creek. So we're at the first step in our three-step review process. If this moves forward this evening, you'll see this two other times following. Just to give a little bit of background, a lot of this, you've already kind of gone over in previous viewings of this project and previous approvals. So I'm just going to highlight a few on the subsequent slides. But back in 2022 is when the original site and building plan was approved for the site. And at that time, it was known as Chaska Club West Industrial. So this was a private developer and investor proposing this project at that time. They did complete some site work on the property, but they never constructed the building as they didn't have an end user identified. In spring of 2024, the, the city did purchase the property, also known as 4501 Creek Road, or the whole Chaska Club West Industrial property, with the purpose to construct the new MSB building. In March of 2025 of this year, the city council did select our architect, Ortel Architects, to be the design team to shepherd this project forward. We did hold a neighborhood meeting in July of this year to showcase the concept of the MSB project. Three attendees did show up to that neighborhood meeting, and then we also did show posters of this project at River City Days as well to get additional public input. So some of the comments received out of two of those events pertain to the outside yard location, Fuel Island location, the conditions of Creek Road and the planned improvements for that, and then other development plans for the area surrounding MSB. The property is comprised- plans for the area surrounding MSB. The property is comprised of four total lots and roughly 22 total acres. The main lot, which is known as Lot 1 Block 1 of Chaska Club West Industrial, also known as 4501 Creek Road, is kind of the main portion of this property that will contain the new MSB building. And this is roughly a little over 12 and a half acres in size. Outlot B is the next largest parcel in this area, which is a little over six and a half acres in size. This contains primarily the ravine system and wooded steep slope, two holding ponds as a part of kind of those initial site work items completed on the property. And this will hold the Fuel Island for the MSB site. Outlot C, which is the parcel in between Outlot B and Lot 1 Block 1, is a little under an acre in size and was basically platted to be that extension of Chaska Creek Boulevard to the south from that roundabout on Creek Road. So, as I mentioned, some site work has occurred, and you can kind of see that on this exhibit here. And ponds, holding ponds for stormwater were also installed at that time. So, there is a total of four stormwater ponds that exist today that will also be a part of the plans that you see moving forward. The property did also get zoned in 2022 when the original plans came forward. So, the zoning is already in place out here as Planned Industrial District 10. These are just a few panorama views of the site, both looking from Creek Road. The top image is looking from the southwest on Creek Road or kind of where Outlot B is. And then the bottom image is also from Creek Road, kind of on that western side of Creek Road looking southeast. The request this evening is for concept plan, which would be for a new building totaling 148,000 square feet and roughly 38 feet in height. It will also include a Fuel Island and a new parking lot totaling roughly 111 stalls. The building in the site would house all of the operations of the current MSB building, so it will hold all of public works, operations, including streets, parks, stormwater, mechanics, building maintenance, sewer and water departments, and our electric department. Currently, the city has 89 employees at our existing facility with the projection to add on 29 more employees in the next 20 or so years. The primary operations of this building on the new site will include vehicle storage, equipment, maintenance, department workshops for each of the specialized departments and office administration. There will not be any outdoor storage with this plan. The existing site that is on Victoria Drive will primarily hold the existing cold storage there today, including the salt shed. This property is guided as business park in our comprehensive plan and, again, Zone PID 10. So, the use that's proposed is consistent with both of those. This is the concept plan or site plan layout of the new building. It's primarily a rectangular building, 148,000 square feet, primarily one-story, but there is a portion of the building that will be two-story for both the workshop space and for the office administration portion. The main parking lot will be kind of on that southeast side of the building, which will house a majority of the staff parking as well as public parking and provide direct access to the main entrance, which is on the south side of the building and circled in red on this exhibit here. The Fuel Island is highlighted in pink on this exhibit and will be kind of towards the southeast side of Outlot B. From a parking standpoint, with the existing employee count and then the future projections, it will require 118 stalls. And as mentioned before, they're proposing 111 stalls, and we have noted high level that there will be some stalls delineated with an Outlot B. They're just not shown on this site plan today. So, one of the things moving into preliminary is we'll have to refine kind of the overall parking proposal for the site to ensure that it meets both the existing and the future projections for the site and also encompass a few stalls for visitors that may utilize this facility. This is a, an exhibit showing kind of the traffic circulation of the site. The main access points into the site will come from Creek Road on two different points. The western access point will be only an operational or staff-only access point to bring people into the facility. This will be a secured access, so it will be outlined with security fencing for a majority of that back portion of the site and building. The other access point, which will be both the public and private shared access, will be an extension of the southern leg of the roundabout at Creek Road and Chaska Creek Boulevard. It will essentially be an extension of Chaska Creek Boulevard to the south and end in a cul-de-sac there. Two access points will come off of that western side. One will be a staff-only access point, which will provide in-and-out movement into the vehicle storage area of the building. And then the southern access point will be that shared access point for the public and for employees as well, which will veer off into the main parking lot area as well as a separate drive aisle to a secured entrance into the back portion of the site and building. On the east side of this southern leg will be an access point to Outlot B or the Fuel Island area, which will provide fuel service for all city vehicles. There's only one area that will be, continue to be refined or evaluated into preliminary, which is a part of the main parking lot areas, ensuring that there's full circulation through that parking lot with the design proposed there. So, something that we'll work on into preliminary. The landscape plan is shown on this screen. I think one of the main discussion points, I think from the beginning, has been the importance to ensure adequate screening to the site, mainly from the residential that is just southwest of the property. Being that this site went through planning approvals in 2022, there was already kind of an expectation in terms of a screening need between the site and that adjacent residential. So, the design team has really taken that plan and mimicked it, so to speak, with the proposed landscape plan here, and will continue to refine that as we work into subsequent steps.
Quick thing is, she's pointing out the landscaping on that southwest side. The other thing that's been designed into the building is, so like in the mechanic space, which is on the south side of the building, and then also in the shop spaces there by that, and there's a car wash station. Those will all, like, right now, we do not have any air conditioning in the, like, mechanic space, and so they have to keep those doors open. Well, when the doors are open, it can be noisy. And so, we've designed this so that they can keep those doors closed so that the neighbors don't have to hear the noise of any of the stuff happening in the mechanic space or any of the other stuff in that south side of the building.
So, are they just going to roast in there?
No, there's, there could be, there's going to be, no, there's going to be air conditioning in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, not in the main vehicle bay, because people are in and out of that. But that, I mean, that space, they're in all day.
Just a few renderings that the design team has also put together to just give a visual of what those site views are from the adjacent residential to understand kind of how the building massing and landscaping will kind of help with the screening. So, this rendering is from the closest residential neighbor to the southwest there, showing kind of that mature tree growth as well as the building overlaid within that. So, that shows kind of a real-time view of what's going to be seen. And then an aerial view or a bird's-eye view, kind of looking northeast, again, from those residential areas to give you an understanding of kind of how the building looks and is laid out on that rear portion of the building in sight.
It's actually a very nice-looking building for a vehicle garage or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah. No, it's a very nice and well-designed building. These images or exhibits show kind of the programmable layout of the building in terms of those specialized areas. The vehicle storage, again, which is fully enclosed, will store all of the city's vehicles within that function. That'll take up a majority of the building space and square footage. And then the office administration, as well as the main entrance and lobby, will be on that southwest side. So, this will hold kind of all of the department heads, offices, the cubes, the workspace, conference space, et cetera. And then those designated workshop areas will be immediately to the west of that and colorized per their specialized department. So, water and sewer, streets department, parks department, building maintenance, and the electric department, kind of all in a line there, will have their own designated work area and locker space area within those spaces.
I was just going to comment when you're talking about building looks and everything, too. I think the other thing that's important, because I actually just pulled it up, it'll be very visible from Highway 212, because you take that overpass and you look straight down there. So, like, you think about who goes back in that space, like, the number of cars that will see that building from 212 will be any more than anything that drive by it. Because I was just kind of curious. I pulled up the street view, and it's, you got right down that road, or you go, it'd be very visible. So, you know, a good-looking building is great because it's, it will be seen by a lot of people.
Yep.
I think, I know the answer, but fire trucks are going to go over to the safety building, so they're not in this building, right?
Well, they, their maintenance will be here.
Yep.
So, the maintenance base, just like they do now, the maintenance space have to be built to bring in the ladder truck.
Can that big truck fit in this?
Yep. Yeah, actually, right now, when they pull the ladder truck in, I mean, it's literally touching the front wall. I mean, it is close. This won't be that snug.
Definitely more space. The bottom rendering here is of that southeast side of the building are kind of where that main entrance is from the main parking lot there. So, that'll be that two-story function. And also have some nice employee refuge area on the second story with an outdoor terrace. And I think, you know, the intention of orienting kind of that main office component towards the southeast, one of them was to take advantage of the wooded views to the south there. So, this will be a really nice place for the employees to use. Another bird's-eye view looking southwest, so kind of from the industrial, business industrial park to the north there. And I think as Councilmember Gra mentioned, you know, this will be a nice building. It will have a lot of presence, even with kind of the main entrance, even though it's kind of set back from the main viewpoint into the site. I think this building will still have a lot of 360-degree architecture included all throughout the building. You'll have clear-story windows into that vehicle storage area, so it will still get a lot of good natural light, but also provide kind of that front aesthetic on Creek Road. The material application is still kind of being refined, which is pretty typical in the concept plan stage, but the intention there is to really try to mimic some of the color palette that we've seen in some other civic buildings, like the Public Safety Facility or City Hall. So, the main building components kind of called out right now would be a mix of brick, some metal cladding, and then precast concrete panels would take up a majority, given that this is a large industrial building. They're still working around with colors and certain material applications, as you can see in kind of the upper-left and the bottom-right images, and those will get refined as we move into preliminary. Just a few things for us to work on for preliminary, ensuring that there's good traffic flow, circulation within the parking lot design, further refinement on the landscape and screening plan, details with the solar arrays. I didn't really get into that too much, but we do have a grant being applied for to acquire solar arrays, which I think some updates on that. Those will primarily be roof-mounted components on the building, but we'll get more details as we continue down that path. And then ensuring that the parking meets the existing and the future needs for the building, including visitors. And then working on some truck turning exhibits for the site and how those will maneuver through the site for both city vehicles and emergency vehicles. So, with that, we're asking to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025-57, approving the concept plan for the new MSB building, and then based on the conditions that are listed within that. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we have Andrew Cooper here with Ortel Architects. If you have any questions for him.
One thing I will mention real quick is throughout this process, so we have RJM, who is also our construction manager up at the Public Safety Building, is working with us on this project. And so, throughout the process, we pick sort of points in time to do cost estimation, to make sure that we're still staying on track for where we need to from a budget perspective. So, we've gone through two now. I think we have one more left, and so far, so good. So, the first two cost estimations have been pretty close to where we need them to be. So, we have one more after we sort of get closer to being, you know, with the final. And obviously, the bid's going to be what the bid is, but it's, we want to make sure that as we're designing this, we're staying on top of that throughout the process.
Does anybody have any questions for Liz?
No. Good job, Liz. You always put so much detail into it. Thank you.
I was looking, and I, you guys touched on the solar panels, so it was like, it's only a bummer that we're not in our own.
That's all the more reason to put solar panels up.
Electrical, I know.
We use our own electricity one way or another.
Yes. So, eventually, we will get there then, but at least in the meantime.
We only got 15 more years left.
15, yep. Got it. Yes.
You and I will be close to retirement.
Well, yes. No, echo the shared thoughts of Councilmember Shovlin. Just thank you for the presentation. This is really exciting, and I just kind of think it must be really interesting for you as staff to go through your own process, like the architectural plans and then the landscaping plans, and kind of be, you know, on that side. And I like to also touch on that in the sense that we are not exempt from that process as a city. You know, we go through our own planning process, and we put the scrutiny, the same sort of stipulations and codes and requirements that any other building would do. And so, I think it's important to kind of acknowledge that it must be really interesting, but also just take pride in the sense that, you know, we hold ourselves accountable to the same standards that we put on any developer that comes through and applies for something in the city.
And one of the big litmus tests we had was when we had the neighborhood meeting. And having, it was pretty rewarding to have the neighbors show up, and they really liked what they saw.
Yeah.
And felt that the things that they were probably most concerned about had already been addressed. So, yeah, so I, I mean, I thought that was a really good meeting with the neighbors to see that they're sort of excited and think that that's a good neighbor to have.
Yeah, and I can attest to that, being a neighbor of the current municipal service building, that it is a really good neighbor to have. There's, you know, activity, but, but it's not, you know, disruptive, and everything is always kind of well-cared-for. It will be sad to see that activity kind of change as, I know it's not going away, but it will change.
Yeah, it's not going away. And one thing I will mention is, in the budgeting process, we're including dollars to be able to sort of reconfigure how we have our yard over there, to, to create a little bit more organization to it. So for instance, like, right now, like, the electric department has supplies that are sitting down at the gas turbine, and some are sitting up at West Creek Station. I mean, they are all over the place.
Right.
And so, we're, we're going to design sort of, you know, a drive-through yards that they're able to be able to, you know, they might start at this place, but they're going to drive up, pick up their supplies at one place, and be able to drive off. Have more bunkers for, you know, the materials like rock and dirt and things like that that can be associated with different departments, so that, that we can keep that a little bit more organized. So it's also going to make that area look better, too.
It's kind of interesting when you talk about the number of parking stalls that were required. In my head, I was like, thinking about, how many stalls are in the current site? And it has got to be nowhere near.
No.
111 stalls. I know that there's a water treatment to the building, but...
Now I go up there, and like, half the people are parked in the, on the grass on the side of the road.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they, they're making it, making it work in that regard.
Well, and there's a lot of people that, like, all of our seasonal employees all park in the back.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, again, it's not a disruptive thing to that street. You know, you don't, you can't tell, you know, as a, as a resident driving along Victoria Drive, that, you know, there's that many folks that are parking, you know, at the municipal service building. So I think about just the process of this, and where, you know, when we first came out with the, the need for buildings, and we talked about the municipal service building, and where we had started with the, you know, okay, we're going to, you know, just add on to the current site and move that transmission line, and how expensive it was, and just being able to kind of readjust our plan and go through this process and reevaluate things to make sure that things are the best. And I think about the time that, that we are at in the city, and how we're at this stage where we can address the needs that we definitely are overdue for, but we can also plan for the future. You know, when you think about those 29 future jobs, and that making sure that we have parking accounted for, for that, I mean, that's, that's where it really matters, is that we're at that point where we can, we can see that, and we can make sure we plan for that and set it up for, for good future use as well.
Well, and we know how many vehicles we'll have in the future, too, so, you know, we, we've planned to make sure that we can park all those in the building.
Yeah. So, those were the, those are the things I wanted to touch on, so.
Ortel's been great, so.
Yes, great.
They've done a great job.
Is there anything you want to speak about, or come on up?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll give you a quick kind of update on where we're at. Actually, we're in the process of meeting with staff. We're moved on from a schematic design into design development. We're looking at a lot of minute details. We're actually going to meet with Liz on Wednesday to discuss some of the site planning things. We're also meeting with the building official and kind of fine-tuning the things we need to fine-tune, so it is a real workable building. Principally, the, when we last met and blend over kind of the initial concept before this formal concept, the site plan really hasn't changed in general character. A couple of things that have developed is we are looking at parking, but also maybe creating more green space around the building, because it's, parking is right uptight, and so that's very kind of a not comfortable thing. So we're trying to design around that, and also working with city engineering on what ponding actually looks like on Lot B, because that's also going to be taking Creek Road's water. So there's a lot of dialogue happening there with how much site is actually going to be water-holding, and how much landscaping is actually going to be able to go over there and kind of mitigating that where it's going. So that's where we're at. We'll probably, we actually get two more cost estimates.
Okay.
We get one update at the end of our design development phase, which is in about a month, and then we'll get another one right at the end of construction documents before authorization to bid. So we're tracking well. It's, it's been a fun process. Staff is very involved, and it's been really good. We've got a big event coming up to demonstrate what the building is like to all staff at municipal services, so it'll be a good time.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. I'm sure that's a lot of shared excitement over there with the, with the crews for what is the possibility, and just even looking at the architectural plans right now, even though I know it's concept level and they're kind of high-level, just to know kind of the layout of the current building, and how much of like a maze it is, and how this thing is here, and this thing's over here, and, and to know that it will be so much easier to utilize, it's, it's really fun. Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. Okay, so, if anybody else has anything more to say, otherwise, I would entertain some motions here. The motion of adopting Resolution Number 2025-57, approving the concept plan for the municipal service building, MSB, PC Number 2025-12.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Gra.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Benish. Any other discussion? All right, well, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, perfect. Well, that moves us off of our action items on the agenda, and it moves us forward to bills. Does anybody have any questions on, on a bill? I've got just a couple. And one of them's not so much a question on current bill as much as just a general question, but it's on, I can't get there on my thing, but it's on number, well, one's an observation, or, okay, number, page number 13, let's start there. It's the Hundred Mark, it's the pedestrian signs. This was kind of exciting to see on the bill roster, because this has been, you know, something that has been asked about by residents, and so I figured I'd just ask, what, where are these pedestrian crossings going, and what's the timeline, do you generally know?
So, I'm not sure if you guys remember, one, we have one last overlay project to do yet this fall. We wanted to wait until 41 opened up to do it. We're going to be overlaying Hundred Mark from basically back at the beginning of the Clover Ridge neighborhood, about halfway down that stretch. And so that's going to occur in the next couple of weeks or, or so, as soon as that opens up. It's not going to take too long, about a week to do it, but it'll be right after that that occurs. And every major crossing, so we have one at, at Community Park, we have one at Friendship Park.
Those are like two main.
I think those are the two.
Isn't there one over by the Montessori?
Bavaria Road at the Montessori. So those three, those three will be the, the ones that get the...
What about down Hundred Mark going on, like, towards the Cortina Woods Playground, kind of over by the high school and Target?
Yeah, so there's one, yeah, I forgot about that one. There's one crosswalk there, it's a mid-buck crossing at Purple Brick Road.
Perfect.
Yep.
Yeah, so I know that that's been a, kind of a wide request from some of our community members, even just over the course of just the summer. And so it's really a happy report that, that that's going to be happening here.
Yep, and then next summer, when we overlay Bavaria, we'll do the same thing on the, the mid-buck crossings as we go up Bavaria.
Yeah, which is really necessary as well, too, a really high-traffic road, both for vehicles and pedestrians, so. So that, I wanted to touch on that. And then also, the next page, on page 14, I just wanted to note that, is that postage for Wagner Press for the newsletter, is that for like, the whole thing? Is that for that whole newsletter that went out to all residents?
It's just for the post, or, it's just for the printing of that.
Okay, but not the, not the, not the mailing?
Not the actual mailing of it.
Okay, okay. That makes sense, because I was like, wow, that is, wow, I can't even believe we did it for that cost. Okay, so that makes a lot more sense.
It, it costs us per year to do that about $75,000.
Okay.
It's not bad, though.
No.
No, I mean...
For every other month, and I'll tell you, I've been getting a lot of really positive comments from people, so.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm not attesting the cost, I just know that from just personal experience, that the postage is, is very expensive when it comes to mailing. And so I was like, really blown, blowing away, thinking, wow, that's what the postage is? That's crazy, so.
If you look at that same thing, the disconnect notices and reminder notices for, what page am I on?
14.
Page six. I think it's for utility services.
Oh.
Those seem super high, like, the billing I can see, because there's, every household gets one, but the disconnect, because we saw the delinquent list last weekend, it wasn't that many.
Yeah, we get a lot more, we get a lot more disconnect notices that go out, and I would say that probably 90% of them get resolved before they actually get disconnected.
Okay.
So there's a lot that go out, but there's not necessarily that's how it goes.
There was like, there was like six on that list.
Yeah. No, most of them get resolved, and it's mainly because our utility billing clerks, like we talked about last meeting, really spend a, a lot of time sitting down with people to come up with payment plans and things like that.
Uh, well, we can maybe wait till other business on that, so, all right. Anybody else have any questions on bills? All right, well, with that, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to pay bills.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Shovlin.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Hatfield. Any discussion? Otherwise, we'll call, please.
Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Benish?
Yes.
Councilmember Shovlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Gra?
Aye.
Mayor Hubbard?
Aye. All right, bills are paid. Okay, so then that moves us along to other business, and let's go ahead and start with Councilmember Gra.
Okay, we have some serious topics and some lighthearted topics, so, we'll start with less serious. I had asked about the ordinance for solicitation, I know it was only a week ago.
Yep.
Did we find if it was already included?
It's already included.
Okay, so explain what that means, if, so if someone has, well, I'll just let you explain it.
Yeah, so what it means is, what we encourage people to do is, first of all, if they have a sign up at their door, and somebody has a solicitor comes up, they're in violation of our ordinance. Now, most of the time, what we've found is that the people who actually come to the door with that are not the ones that actually have the license, they're ones, people that don't. And so what we encourage people to do is just call the police. You know, it's very easy to find these people, because they just go from door to door to door, and, you know, and, and people shouldn't be afraid to ask, can I see your solicitor's permit? Because if they can't produce it, it means that they have not been registered.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Moving to the more serious things, so, September 10th is World Suicide Prevention Day. I knew it snuck up on me. Something I take to heart, I lost my brother when I was a fifth grader to suicide, so if you need help, ask for help, 988 is the national number. So just wanted to, almost missed it, was before the meeting and after the meeting, so World Suicide Prevention Day. So, a lot of mental health conversation in the news, you know, so get help if you need help, reach out. And then I think it goes true for if you know someone who needs help. Sometimes it's hard to ask someone, do they need help? And truthfully, sometimes the person really needs you to ask that question, right? They, they don't know how to bring it up, they don't know how to have that conversation. So sometimes asking for a friend, hey, are you okay, just to check in, is, is good advice. Connected to that, I'll share a conversation that I had with my kids, actually. So, lot of stuff in the news, right? And I don't watch, we don't, we're too busy to have the news on or really TV on much, but my kids catch on to things. So, you know, they had some questions about stuff that was happening in the last several weeks and months in the country, and I really summed it up to them, and I think it's good for us, because I think all of us as individuals sometimes question like, okay, man, these are big issues. How do I, what do I do? Like, what can I help? How can I be, be a change agent or help? And I think it's as simple as what I told my kids. Be good, do good, and be friendly, right? Like, just simple stuff, right? See someone sitting on a bench at a park by themselves at school, go talk to them. Be a friend, be kind, simple acts of kindness. I just think we've forgotten how to be kind to our fellow person, truthfully. And so I just shared that, it was interesting, because sometimes my kids are 10 and 12, and sometimes they have profound questions that even shock me, right? Like, you know, deep thoughts, and I look at our future sitting out there, even, just be kind, right? Like, it's great, you know, Boy Scouts is awesome. You know, right? So I just, I just want to share that, because I think sometimes we find ourselves like these big weighty subjects, and don't know how to approach them, and I just think sometimes it comes down to just being kind and, and doing good and being good. Okay, now on a lighter side, other than connection to the Minnesota Vikings, which was not a good topic last night, but if you were watching it, did everyone catch the Chaska Curling Center?
Yeah.
Previewed, okay, good. I was like, I do tune, well, I was mostly tuned to the game at that point.
Yeah, they put it too late in the game.
Yeah, too late in the game. But then all of a sudden, like, looking up, I'm like, oh, they're talking curling in the Olympics, and I'm like, that's the curling center. So, super cool, I know every, I think NBC really likes us, because I feel like NBC's Sunday Night Football tends to highlight the Chaska Curling Center every time it's here.
Actually, what's really good is, it's actually the state tourism department, so what those TV stations do is they call them, and they say, well, what places should we go to in the Twin Cities? And it is amazing how many times that they send them to the curling center, and you might be watching whatever sport, and then all of a sudden, there's the curling center, it's like, wow. So, yeah.
Yeah.
It's pretty cool.
That was super cool. I was just like, oh, look at that. And my son-in-law, she kind of caught the end of it, and she's like, why would they be out there for others, talking about?
Because we're awesome.
The Olympics, and we're awesome, so. So, I thought that was super cool. It was a highlight in a very not-so-highlight evening of sports games, so. And then lastly, I will just share, just continuing to, shout out to Chaska Hawk Sports. You know, the season's going on, I know there's, it's homecoming this week. They play Mankato East, who's also 3-0, Chaska's 3-0. And I'll also tell you, young adults make good choices for homecoming, and adults, right? Recognize there's going to be more traffic in the parade and all that type of stuff, but it's, it looks like, I have not gotten to a football game myself yet, but they are 3-0, and they've actually won pretty easily, so. It'd be really nice to win homecoming, because there is a really big matchup coming with Chan. Chan's really good this year as well, they're also currently 3-0, I think they're second in state, ranked state.
Yeah, they won 65 to nothing against Burnsville.
Yeah. So, hopefully, it won't be the score for us, but, so, just a, just a shout out to the school and, and all the fun and excitement of Homecoming Week. And, you know, I know that those high school juniors and seniors are watching the council meeting right now, and they're going to listen to you about making good choices.
You just keep thinking that.
I'll say make good choices, so. And that is all I have, Mayor.
Awesome. That's a great report. Okay, well, let's move down the line over here to Councilmember Shovlin.
I want to just give a shout out to Kevin Wright and Officer, and I'm never going to say his name right, who's the community...
Coordinance?
Yes. Martine Goniz? Yes. He, they were out at my block this week for the block party, and they came with some really great information on traffic, on different things that were going on in the city, had a lot of fun with the kids. And if you haven't had the block party wagon or the city wagon come lately, it's really cool now, because they have TV screens on them that, while they're talking, show movies to the kids, and there's video game consoles on it, so really a good way for the kids to, you know, also be involved while their parents are listening. Shout out to my neighborhood for zero calls this year, that was wonderful to hear, and they also bring ice cream. So if anybody is interested in bringing them to your neighborhood, it's a, it's actually a really fun time and very informational. Second thing is, I know Cub Scouts are selling wreaths, I know schools, the public schools are doing their pizza fundraiser, and I know it is annual Catholic Schools Week, so they are looking for donations for marathons. So all those kids are probably really cute and coming to your door, and I would hope that, that you would be kind.
Which is not solicitation.
I am laughing because...
It is not solicitation.
Yeah, I'm laughing because I was the top earner at that Catholic school one year for the marathon.
Good job.
I don't know if I'm on a plaque somewhere, but I always like to think of...
You should just assume you are, just clean your...
It was, it really refined my elevator pitch, and[1744.01] It really refined my elevator pitch and really helped in the future for all the door knocking needs, and so.
You know, you're ahead of my six-year-old who literally knocks at the door and says, I go to St. Hubert's, do you want to help my school? That's her, that's her venture, so, but she looks really cute in her uniform.
It's kind of cute, I didn't know they even still did that as a fundraiser.
If you see those kids coming, any of those kids to your doors, try to, you know, support their sports or their schools or whatever that they're coming to you with, and if, even if you can't, just, you know, let them know that you are, uh, happy for what they're doing and taking their education serious and their sports and whatever. Um, and then, last but not least, it was just nine eleven last week, so, um, for all those that remember those days, it was a, obviously a kind of big reminder of a big change in our country, but also a really good reminder that a lot of people today living did not experience that, so just to make sure that we don't forget all the lives that, not only were lost, but all of the lives that continue to protect our freedom in this country, um, so that that doesn't happen again.
Well said, well said. All right, great report, thank you. All right, let's move down, let's move down the line, Councilwoman Benish.
Well, as my former paramedic partner used to say, heavy sigh, Josh, heavy sigh. And I want to echo a lot of what Councilmember Gra said about do good, be good, be a friend. I tell my kids all the time, do the right thing, be a good person. But I just want to go on record and say that violence is not the answer for political discord. Violence is never the answer, in my mind, especially when we can talk things out and we can work on a solution. I don't condone those sorts of actions, or any violent action, no matter what side of the aisle you claim to be on. I personally do not see eye to eye with a lot of these people on either side, but I'm appalled at the actions of a few in this country, whether it be political in nature, religious in nature. It's horrifying what's gone on, and I have my ideas of why it's going that way, but everybody could just stand to be nicer and be better. Be better to each other, so, that's all I've got.
All right, well, very important as well. All right, Councilmember Hatfield?
Yeah, I think a lot of good stuff, I won't, don't even repeat it, but I agree. I will say, uh, something lighthearted, Latino, um, Latin Food Fest.
Latin Festival.
Festival, yeah.
Food and Music Festival, sorry.
Was a really nice, um, event that, um, is always good, always good food, always, um, just a lot of happiness and people coming together. And I always really loved that event, um, not just because I love tacos, but, um, it's just always a really, um, good event to just see so much of the community show up and, um, just celebrate, um, culture, and I think that's amazing. So, just wanted to, um, thank everyone that puts that on. And then a few events coming up, uh, I think we're really fortunate to have our own police department. Um, but there is also the Carver County Sheriff that supports our community, um, and surrounding communities, and they are having an open house on October fourth, so I just wanted to put that on everyone's calendars. I think they've done them before, but.
You have, you know, it's really, I would say, if you have a moment, they, you can tour the jail.
Yeah.
And tour the, um, kind of like the, the, the evidence, um, yeah, department. And it's, it's really fascinating, um, some of the tools and resources, so.
Yeah, so that's October fourth, um, it's a Saturday, ten to two, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Highly recommend, um, going to that. And then Coffee with a Cop is this Wednesday, nine thirty, at the Target in Chaska, um, so that's Starbucks there. So that's always a good event. Um, and then, you know, this is a, a timely event, I'm always appreciative that our district puts these on. But, um, Wednesday at six thirty, they'll have a district safety presentation at Chan-Hassan High School. And so the, um, the district safety, uh, team, I guess, so the SROs, um, their Director of Safety, Assistant Superintendent, Superintendent, all, um, help with that presentation and just talk, um, about, you know, it's a community conversation. And they listen, and it's just, it's always good, they did one last time, I think it was more centered on social media, if I remember correctly. But, um, I just, I think it's so timely and good that our district does this, and I really appreciate how mindful our, our district is about school safety. And so I think it's, it's open to everyone, even if you don't have kids and you just want to understand how our district is keeping our kids safe. I think you can go and, um, it's still a good conversation, so. Um, and then also, coming up Thursday, eleven thirty, twelve thirty, is the free food distribution. Um, that's at, on Stoughton, at the former Gedney Factory, um, eleven thirty to twelve thirty. And that's always, um, a good event, I think they're always looking for volunteers too, so if you're free in the middle of the day and you want to volunteer, get involved, um, that's always a really good event to get, because there's a lot of smiling faces. You can hand food out, it's still nice this time of year, um.
Yeah.
Before it gets cold.
Been there, done that.
Um, so yeah, that's, there's some things coming up, and then of course, Chaska Cares is on Saturday. I was going to ask, is it rain or shine?
Rain or shine?
Rain or shine, okay.
There's, what, don't say rain.
I'm just saying, it looks like some rain could be in the forecast, but you have a rain jacket, you have a rain jacket, you have an umbrella.
He won't melt.
We expect to see you there. So that's on Saturday, um, and will be a lot of fun, so. Oh, I forgot to mention the fireworks were good, too.
Well, yes, for the, at the.
There's not fireworks at Chaska, but it reminded me.
Yes.
That's how ADHD works, folks. So, yeah, I think that's everything that I was going to talk about.
That's a great report. All right, well, let's move along to Elise. Krista. Golly, okay, well, I'm glad I got logged back into my computer quickly, no. Just have a few things. One, I will echo the, um, feelings set up here in regards to some of the kind of recent events, uh, in our country. And I think going back towards the public statement release back when, um, we had the assassination of, um, Representative Hortman and her husband, um, I just think it's important for us to have shared humanity, to recognize the, the human in all of us and that we can agree or disagree on points, but I think people's lives have value, and I think it's important for us to remember that when we interact with people and to be kind, um, and thoughtful, and the nature of engaging with one another, so. I won't go too far into that, but I agree with what was said. On a lighter note, if you haven't already looked at your mail, and I'll admit that I probably haven't grabbed my mail this week. So I grabbed this off the desk in the office, but we have a newsletter, people, and it's beautiful. Um, so this was mailed out to all the residents in Chaska. It's a bimonthly newsletter that, uh, talks about, um, some city topics, it also, you know, highlights some initiatives, uh, talks about like our strategic vision on this one, it talks about some upcoming events, and just some need-to-know pertinent information. So I just want to, um, shout out that, you know, it's really hard right now with the loss of our local newspaper to kind of get that source of information, and I know we have a nonprofit newspaper that's online, and we have other forms and means like social media and other realms, but a lot of folks were missing that printed piece of information. And I'm really grateful to our staff for putting this together, I know this is a big undertaking. And so kudos to, I know Krista that's sitting on the other side of this wall, I know she was instrumental in putting this together, so great job. And great job to, um, all of our staff that contributed, um, to look and feel of that. It's been really well received, as we touched on earlier, and I'm excited for the future issues, so.
It looks so nice, can I just say that?
Yeah.
I have kind of high expectations, if you don't know, like, I can be kind of picky. But I was like so impressed when I got it on my mailbox, so I just want to like, yeah, thank you to the staff.
Yeah, the graphics are great, the visual, you know, it looks like you said, like a newspaper, it's got, you know, really nice Chaska branding, so.
Yeah, and it's not like half, you know.
Well, it's not, it's not a novel.
It's not like half has it, it's not just like, oh, here's a little postcard.
Like a one sheet or something to be, or, yeah.
It's got some meat to it, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, so, and I just hope it's, I mean, it's something that's, uh, easy to kind of have as a reference point, you know, for when you, you know, want to, um, save the date on something or go back and look at something, so. I, I really, really love it, and I'm just so glad that we, we have that in our toolkit.
You can't say it, but she's probably blessed you behind.
I hope so, Krista, I hope so, you did such a good job, so, I just want you to know that and put that on the record. I can't say it either, Latin Food and Music Festival, it's like an epidemic over here, was fabulous. So many people out, such a wonderful evening, the fireworks were fabulous, the food was great. Um, the atmosphere, uh, was wonderful, and I think the highlight for me this year, I mean, the fireworks are always a highlight. Um, and I, I got to have a friend come, um, that used to live in the area, come and enjoy it with me, and she was like just blown away by the fireworks. She's like, this is just amazing. But it was the students from La Academia that sang, uh, a couple of songs, and I, I'm nearly positive that they probably just learned those songs in Spanish from the beginning of the school year, which, I mean, started just like two weeks ago. So, my hat's off to them, that they were, they have the courage to stand up there, um, on that little stage and sing a song that they had just learned, two songs, and do it in another language, um, that may not be their first language, was incredible. It was just so rewarding to watch, so, I was really great, I think that's the first year that they've done that, unless I missed it, but it was just so great. I hope they bring it back again, so. A lot of proud parents and grandparents in that crowd, I know. We talked about last meeting, we have the bonding, so we are lucky enough to have been, um, picked and selected to be on the, um, bonding tour for the, uh, Minnesota Senate, and that's happening this Wednesday, and they're going to be stopping here about six thirty or so to talk about City Square West, so we're looking forward to that happening. And, uh, hopefully they love what we have to show them. Uh, and then, uh, we have, um, our next meeting on September twenty-ninth, so we do have a fifth Monday this month, and so we will have one more council meeting for September. And then I also want to share, and I got to bring this up on my phone, so give me a second, one of our, so I don't always know when our firefighters retire. Sometimes I learn about it being just on the, um, the relief board, uh, but oftentimes I don't know about until maybe after the fact. But sometimes when I'm queued in and I, uh, see it ahead of time, I do know one of our firefighters that just is going to retire, and I wanted to give her a shout out, because she is the first female firefighter that is retiring in Chaska Fire Department, and that is really important and special. Um, so it's Stephanie Flyris, am I?
Fillers.
I, I knew I was going to butcher the last name, because I don't use it very often, but I went to her little retirement party that she had hosted, uh, this weekend, and there was lots of memorabilia of her time spent on the fire department. And it was so incredible to see the, um, retired firefighters, um, and the current ones, and even ones from other stations come out and their family. And, you know, you just see the love and support, uh, for Stephanie as she kind of embarks on retirement. But one of the things that she had at her table, I said I wanted to read off, because I just thought, this was just so incredible, um, to see this and to see the impact that even the firefighter, the firefighters have impact on our community, you know? They run towards danger while most people run away, but also just to see the impact that our community has on them is really nice to witness. And the story kind of showcases that, so, this is written by her, and it says, "My first fire call as a fire, my first call as a firefighter on my very first night with a pager was a baby birth. A little boy came into the world that night, and I sprang into action, supporting the mother from her upstairs window all the way into the ambulance and throughout the thirty-minute ride to the hospital. The fire chief cradled the newborn in his arms while I held the mother steady and present. On my way back to the station, I realized that this was the sign I had been searching for. I doubted myself whether I would be, whether I would truly step outside of my comfort zone, but that moment, that call, was exactly what I needed. It was the universe's way of saying, you're meant to be here. Some firefighters go twenty years without assisting a birth, and some never get a stork pen. I was fortunate enough to be gifted one my very first call." I thought, that is incredible, and she told me that she had actually assisted in three births over her time. And just to see that, um, you know, care and, uh, support, uh, that she has for our community and our community has back for her. So, I wish her the best in her retirement, so. And on that note, um, that's everything I have, unless anybody has anything else.
Can we do one more recognition, too? Um, I shouldn't want to forget, a pretty incredible achievement by Lieutenant Chris George from our police department.
Yes.
Going through, graduating from the two-hundred-and-ninety-fifth session of the FBI, um, National Academy. My understanding is that's pretty prestigious and pretty.
It's very selective.
Yes, very selective.
Yes.
So that's incredible, and to have, um, his leadership in our police department is, is just amazing. I've always appreciated that about our police department, is all of the individuals are very motivated. You know, they all sort of have their own things, which you would see probably anywhere, but I just, I really appreciate, they're all so engaged and want to learn more and do more, and they're, you know, so many of them are getting more education and things, and that's exactly what you want to have in a police department, really, is people that really care about their community and are committed to their jobs and want to learn more and do more. And so, um, congratulations, uh, to Lieutenant George on that, and.
Yes, thank you, I am, I feel kind of like a jerk that I completely forgot about that, but you're right, I mean, and that is so incredible, and you're right, they have so much commitment, and it was great, I was able to see him, because he helped, um, transport me around. He was my, you know, person at the Memorial, um, Day Event, uh, when we were going with the honor guard, so. We had a, a nice time talking about that opportunity and to see that, you know, his commitment towards his profession and our community to want to, like you said, um, you know, continue his education on, but also what the sacrifice that he was giving up. He was giving up a summer with, away from his family, you know, because he was over there at Quantico and, you know, that, obviously the distance and the length of time, so just incredible to see that. So I was really, um, happy to see he was back, and that sounded like it was a great time, so, thank you for, for mentioning that, so. All right, last call, anybody else? All right, otherwise, uh, we do have an Economic Development Authority meeting after this, but I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Gra, and a second from Councilmember Shovlin, any discussion? I don't think, all right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you for being here, sir. Hopefully there was something that was interesting for you. Okay.
He's like, no, quick, get me out of here.
I know. Eight forty-five.
We got one more meeting.
Thank you. All right. Okay, uh, Krista, just tell me, actually, I got to get ready here. Can we, can we take like a little brief recess for, um?
Pregnant persons to go to the bathroom?
Yeah, to, for someone to use the restroom facility? Okay. Semester sign language?
Glasses?
Okay, maybe not. Maybe I'm rusty. Okay, maybe not. Maybe I'm rusty at that.
Know my name.
Yes. I used to be friends with one of our classmates that was deaf at the high school. Okay, is everyone feeling good? Get this rolling again?
Yeah.
Krista, you ready? Okay, okay. Uh, I'd like to call this meeting to order, um, for the Chaska Economic Development Authority on Monday, September fifteenth, calling it to order at eight fifty. I don't know if that matters. Roll call, please. Commissioner Hatfield?
Here.
Commissioner Benish?
Here.
Commissioner Shovlin?
Here.
Commissioner Grau?
Here.
President Hubbard? Here. All right, next is to adopt the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or corrections on the agenda? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion for adoption.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
All right, uh, we have a, a motion from Commissioner Benish.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Hatfield. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adopted agenda. Let's move on to approval of previous meeting minutes. These meeting minutes were from August fourth of twenty twenty-five. Does anybody have any additions or corrections on the meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes.
All right, so we have a motion from Commissioner Hatfield.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Grau. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting minutes approved. And then that moves us along to our discussion items. We just have one, and it's five A, which is a public hearing. Consider modification of the redevelopment plan for redevelopment District Number Four, establishing tax increment financing, TIF, District Number Twenty-five, adopting a TIF plan, and authorizing the execution of a TIF agreement and granting a business subsidy.
Uh, Madam President and Commissioners, uh, the item in front of you tonight is, uh, basically the exact same action you took during the council meeting. The council basically authorizes the EDA, uh, which they're technically separate bodies, to be able to establish the, the TIF district and then enter into the agreement. So, uh, not only do we have to hold a public hearing in the council meeting, but we also have to hold a public meet, uh, hearing in the EDA, too. But it's for EDCO, and it's basically the exact same thing.
Okay, that, uh, that makes sense. And any questions? I mean, if, this is all going to run together, I'm sure, as one meeting on YouTube. If you have any questions, you can rewind back to, um, the, uh, great explanation from Julie in regards to the TIF district and the, um, the details. But it sounds like we're going to also do a public hearing as part of this one as well. So, if there are no questions, I will open the public hearing up at eight fifty-three PM. There's no one in the audience, but does anybody like to speak to this? Okay, so I'm going to close that public hearing at eight fifty-four PM. And that is all with this one, correct? No action item, because that will be next time around. Okay, well, that moves us along on the agenda to other business. Does anybody have any other business in relation to the Economic Development Authority? No? All right, well then, Pat, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion from Commissioner Shovlin.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Benish. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.